Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors to order a business meeting Thursday, May 12, 2022. Will everyone please stand and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage on their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and the sociopolitical realities. General Counsel Trueblood, would you please read the role?
Yes, good evening. President Von Bright?
Here.
Director Leon?
Here.
Director Strohsher?
Here.
And Director McElroy?
Here.
And we also have two of our student board representatives here with us tonight, Caitlin Yeh and Shidra Buonica. We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. All right, let's move on to item five, or adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there anyone to second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or concerns about the agenda? Hearing none. I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes four to zero. Onto item six, recognition of staff, students and community. Six point one, civic observances.
Yes, good evening. We have two civic observances that are recognized by the law for the state or for the month of May. And the first one is Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific American Heritage Month. And we've linked to the agenda, the President of the United States proclamation. It's also recognized by the Washington State Legislature to honor the rich history of these groups that we're particularly proud to have a great population of Asian American and Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders here in Tacoma and in Tacoma Public Schools. So we hope that our teaching staff will take a moment to acknowledge this month in May. And then on to item six point one B, also as Memorial Day is coming up, and we're looking forward to that as a well-deserved holiday. It's a long stretch between spring break and the end of school, and Memorial Day is one of those. We also have two links in here also to Memorial Day to allow folks at home to learn a little bit more about the origins of Memorial Day. But it's, Memorial Day is always observed as the last Monday in May to commemorate the men and women who died in military service. And so we, nearly I think every family has been touched by the service of folks who have helped to keep America free, and we thank them on Memorial Day.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item seven, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Board of Directors. Before we get started, I just want to take a moment. It is the month of May. We have some amazing things that are happening in our schools. If you get a chance, please check your local school calendar. This is the time of year of so many celebrations. We're in the playoff seasons for our high schools. There's productions being done. There's art competitions. There's still after-school activities through the Beyond the Bell program and wonderful opportunities. And in that time, it also is, it starts to, folks start to get a little bit about, whoa, school year's ending up. And so it can be very tense. And I just want to remind everyone to try to be patient. Be patient with yourself as a learner if you're a student. You've got some time still. Be patient as a staff member. There's a lot of, lots of pressures out there, and we recognize and you're not alone. And there's so much to celebrate. This has been a very difficult year, and all of us coming back in person all year long. And we're not quite finished, and that's okay. But our TPS staff, families and community and students have just done a phenomenal job. And I just want to take a moment and just tell them and you how proud of them we all collectively are. And with that, it's summer right around the corner. And what's really special about Tacoma Public Schools is one of the many things in our community is we don't do summer school in a traditional summer school way. And so I've asked Mr. James Neal to come up, and James has a very difficult task of leading a cross-departmental, cross-agency, summer program that is designed to be engaging, different, and extremely supportive. And so, Mr. Neal?
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me. You may ask, why is the athletics department here to talk about summer school? Well, we are the nerve center of the school district. So imagine if it's happening in Tacoma Public Schools. My department probably has their hand in it, mostly good things, I hope. So today, we're going to go over some of the summer learning opportunities that Tacoma Public Schools is offering this summer. And this is a cross-departmental project that has many people across many layers supporting to help all of this happen. And so by no means am I taking any credit over any of this work. So our goal is to provide a free opportunity for our students K-12 to have summer learning opportunities that will give a boost and help them catch up or ease the transition to a new school for the next year when they're moving up a grade level. All programs will incorporate social emotional learning. And we're always, as always, offering either in-person or an online opportunity as well, remote. We're going to continue to use the Washington State Department of Health guidelines in regards to keeping our students' health and our staff as well. And then we'll collaborate with staff and community and other organizations to provide engaging learning experience for our summer learners. So not just things happening with Tacoma Public Schools, but then also partnering across many different partners to put on activities. The different departments that are participating and putting on program this summer, one of our primary partners in this is Title I and LAP, and they offer both an elementary and a middle and a high school program. At elementary, we're doing our traditional camp discovery, reading camp, grades three through five. And those are students that are currently in second through fourth, transitioning up to three and five. We have 10 sites. Each site has an opportunity to serve 45 students. Some are already at cap and over, and some are still needing students. Middle school summer learning programs. Each middle school had opportunity to design their own summer learning program to meet the needs of their own unique school. We asked for ease of families and our community to make sure that it falls in a certain time of the day so that when elementary school kids and high school kids are both in the same learning space, that they're both in that space at the same time. So everything's kind of going nine to noon this summer. And then high school will be doing credit retrieval through Edge Newity at the five high school sites. And then we'll offer our traditional jumpstart programs for incoming kindergarten students and sixth grade students, sorry, fifth transitioning to sixth and eighth transitioning to ninth. And that comes on later in August. The special ed department will be supporting their extended school year at Reed Elementary and as well for our transitioning students at the PDC. And then English Language Learning Department will be supporting basically a camp discovery program for students who qualify for English Language Learning Services at 10 elementary sites, as well as First Creek, Truman, and Lincoln High School. The Academic Equity and Access Department is offering Foundations for the Future for students eighth through 12th grade. It's a remote full summer course. They can earn a credit if they complete all of the programming. And then their traditional AP Bridge Program through ninth to 12th students. And then the CTE Department will continue to offer the depth and breadth of hands-on learning programs that provide certifications. You can see the long list there. Summer Jobs 253, Drone Pilot Certification. I think I'm going to sign up for that one. The Pipe Filling and Plumbing, Community Service, Nursing Assistance, Workforce Central, Career Launch, and then the Electrician's Interim Credential. We have several other programs going with our community partners. Metro Parks is doing some extended learning opportunities at Baker and Hilltop during the summer, calling it a summer camp. And then Communities and Schools is doing that at Gray. And I think also, we have a YMCA program in a couple spots. I didn't have that on here. There you go. And then it goes blank. Any questions that you have about all the stuff we're trying to do?
I was going to say, James, this is incredible, how many, and varied types of options. Can you share for the folks at home where they can find these and how they learn more about the specific things that we just rattled through?
Yeah, we have a website. If you do go to Tacoma Public Schools and look, search for summer learning, you'll find all the links to the different programs there and how to register.
Great.
Yep.
And I just, I just want to be clear. You said that these were, some of these are free opportunities?
Yeah.
Are all of them free?
All of these are free.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's just important to say.
Yeah.
So I understand you said that there are some openings left. So for those of you that have not--
Yeah, Camp Discovery, I know for sure, but--
For those that have not made plans yet, it's a good time to get on the website and sign your kids up.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Well, wait a sec. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
One question. So for Camp Discovery, I know that's grades third through fifth or current second through fourth graders. Do parents need to reach out to their teachers? Do they need to be referred? Like, how can parents who might be really busy, people who might miss this meeting, how are they getting this information?
So first, first layer is that students are referred, but if parents do have an interest, they can go to their, their school's teacher and ask about it.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll be putting out more communications. So this was just the, for those that were starting to wonder, are we doing it? Yes, we are doing it, and here's the programs. And so there'll be a communications package that comes out.
Right. And I know that probably at different levels, the teachers and schools are giving, giving the information to especially secondary kids. I know for Jobs 253, they're already out recruiting, so--
And there's other learning opportunities that, that we will be partnering with our community, Metro Parks, the Foundation for Tacoma Students. They put a number of different programs out there.
Yeah.
And so we'll be sharing those opportunities as well.
Perfect.
I'm going to introduce Adam for CTE.
I'm going to steal one minute because it's exciting for kids. And I'm going to bring Chris Sieg up here. That office works tirelessly in terms of creating some opportunities. And I want to, want to celebrate him in terms of celebrating experiences.
Thanks so much, Adam. Yeah, just want to report a little bit about the Summer Jobs 253 program. We have 175 students that are going to be starting up this summer doing community service and getting paid $1,000 with a partnership with the city of Tacoma. So that's a great opportunity for students to be able to do community service, get paid, and also get credit. And as far as the certification programs, James mentioned on the, on the slide of all the different programming we have going on this summer. We had a record 225 students interested. And from that interest survey, they, they get filtered into those eight different programs. And for the first time ever, we have more students than we have spots. So we're looking to expand, and we've, we've developed a website, and we're looking to expand with our partners to create more opportunities for every student that wants an opportunity this summer. They get paid $500, get industry-recognized certification and high school credits.
Thank you for all the hard work you're doing. I know last, last year I was able to go and give out checks at the end of the year for 253, Jobs 253. And to see, I talked to a bunch of the students and said, you know, what did you think? What did you do? And everybody, every single one of them, it was so meaningful to have that money that they earned on something that they were committed to. And it just changed the trajectory of how they spent their time during the summer, so--
Yeah, that's, that's one of the main goals.
Chris, can I put you on the spot?
Yeah, absolutely.
As part of that curriculum, is there any financial literacy that is happening with that?
Yeah, thank you for the reminder of that. You know, that's part of the, the, when the program was first developed. That was the most, one of the most important pieces was besides the work and experience in getting credit, is the financial literacy piece. So there's a, there's four modules through Revify that the, that the students go through to learn financial literacy. And that's a, that's a real big push through our office and through that program.
Thank you, Chris. Chris is one of those many unsung heroes that you may not hear about that makes really magical things happen for kids. And so we're extremely grateful to have him on our team.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Any, any prisons?
Just general questions, partly for you. So it's excellent that you have more applicants now. And I appreciate your going back to the partners and trying to see if you can get more spots. It sounds like what you're doing. Can you open up more spots to these folks that want, want a position? Is that what I heard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Yeah. And my question is, do you expect the summer learning program to be at kind of pre-pandemic levels this year with the, the need? Or are the kids registered already? They could, they'll probably register throughout between now and the summer, right? So you don't really know.
You're the first part of the kickoff process, so tonight. So there actually, folks are starting to gather through some individual programs, but the general masses have not started in there. And you know, and I'll continue to remind folks that learning happens in a variety of ways. And so it could be at home. It can be, and so our students will be able to take their laptops home. And that's exciting for them, so they can continue that work. There's community partnerships, as I mentioned. And, and then I think one of the things that we're really trying to help folks understand is it's okay for them to take a break, too. It's okay for kids to decompress, for staff to decompress, for all of us. And so what we're trying to do is create a portfolio of options to meet the needs and at the same time, understand and support each family where they are.
I might add that just as far as the jobs, Summer Jobs 253, the component of community service, there is the option of students to be able to do community service online. And the, the financial literacy curriculum is online. So there's, there's, there's any option. We've had kids complete the Summer Jobs 253 out of state. We've had kids complete it online. So there's all sorts of different kinds of options with that. And we're, we're going to get you back to speak to the group like we did last year.
Awesome. Anybody have any other questions? All right, team, thank you so much. We're excited about summer.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam President, one other quick announcement that I'd like to make. As students think about, okay, well, that's great, but I'm also leaving or transitioning the Tacoma Public Schools. And some students have plans, and some students aren't quite yet sure. And we're here to say is that's okay, but we can still help you make those plans. And so I have, and our team has been in contact with a number of local higher ed institutions for trades like Clover Park. Clover Park is, and Bates are still taking students. And so it's not too late to get signed up for summer or even the fall. If you're out there, or if you know a loved one that's looking for that next step, they have, I saw a list of over 30 amazing programs, and they're in there. TCC is still accepting our students, and you are automatically enrolled as a TPS student. PLU just continues to accept students through our guaranteed admissions program. And UFT is also looking for more students to come. And so if you know a loved one out there that has said, well, I didn't know higher ed was for me, or post-secondary learning, of course it is. And if you need help, please contact your high school, or you can contact the central office, and we're more than willing to bridge those for you as well. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Any other comments you want to share, Superintendent, before we move on?
Thank you for your time.
Okay. So number eight, staff report to the board. There isn't one this month. So we'll move on to members of the public wishing to address the board. Note, we have two ways to do that. We have an option one, which is in-person, and option two, which is a written comment. So the school board encourages public participation. Your, your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. However, the superintendent and/or designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at the meeting, you may also send an email to the board at board@tacoma.k12.wa.us. Please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability accommodations. So, General Counsel, do we have anyone wishing to speak today?
Tonight, we don't have any verbal in-person public comment. We do have one written comment, which has been appended to the board agenda and is, you can read it through the link. And it was James Powell regarding, please revise internet access policy for district laptops, students, and instructors.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I know those members all read, have an opportunity to read the ones that are provided in advance in preparation of the meeting. So thank you for that, Mr. Powell. So the next item is 10, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments about the consent agenda or items of question? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have passed the consent agenda four to zero. Number 11 is Policy Matters, and there are none this week. Number 12 is the Financial Report. And here is our CFO, Rosalyn Medina, coming up to give us a report. Thank you.
Well, good evening. And I just want to give you a brief update on where we're at in our financial position. So this is a familiar format. You see this, every quarter I provide a financial update so that we can have a quick look at where we're at as a district and make sure that if there are any adjustments that need to be made to the way that we're operating, that we can act quickly on this. You'll see on the right-hand side that we have our schedule of expenditures, revenues, and our fund balance. If you look at row two under the revenues, you'll see that we had budgeted around $554 million, and we're currently anticipating revenues closer to $500 and a half million, which is a pretty significant change from what we budgeted to what we're actually anticipating coming in. We did budget quite a bit of money and capacity for our ESER. So that's just excess funds in anticipation that we might get additional resources into the budget. That plays a big impact on this. We also had a decline in enrollment that plays an impact on the amount of revenues that we've brought in this year or plan to bring in this year. Under the expenditures, which is row three, you'll see that we had budgeted $587 million, and we're coming in closer to $505 million on our expenditures, which is also a significant shift. The great, the great news here is that we're actually lower on expenditures than we are on revenues. So we're in a better position financially than what we thought we might be when we put the budget out a year ago, almost a year ago. So what that really means in the end is that we're anticipating a fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, around $52 million, $51 and a half million. And that's a 10 and a half percent reserve. Our current policy requires us to maintain at least 5% in reserves. And so this will put us in a better financial position when we go into the following year, where I believe we will be needing to use some of those resources, which leads me into a conversation around some of the legislative highlights. So the legislature completed, and Charlie Brown did come and give you a presentation on all the great things that the legislature was able to do for us this year. I've been able to put some financial figures to those great things, starting with the enrollment stabilization. House Bill 1590 was approved, and it's some enrollment relief. This is a stabilization amount that will come to us based on our 1920 enrollment, looking at our current enrollment and giving us about half of that loss. And that'll be about $8 million. The fun thing about that is, even though it's intended for use in the 23, 22, 23 year, excuse me, it's going to come to us this May. And that'll be right around $8 million. So we'll be seeing that right now in this apportionment that should be coming in the next week and a half. And those resources will be available for us at the end of this, at the end of this year. Levy stabilization was also provided. They're allowing us to use ghost students. It's a funky term, but we used to have ghost revenues. If you've been around long enough, you've heard of ghost revenues. Now we have ghost students. What that essentially means is that students who were in existence in 2019, 20, are being used in our calculation methodology for determining our levy. And that we'll be able to do that through the 2023 calendar year. And so we'll be able to receive some additional funds based on that stabilization. The prototypical allocation is a new social, physical, social, and emotional supports allocation that we'll receive through our prototypical funding allocation model. And that just means that where we used to have to fund a lot of our nurses and counselors without additional support from the state, the state's now going to provide us with some of those resources to be able to provide additional counselors, nurses, and social workers, and psychologists beyond what the state currently provides for.
Right, can I ask one point? So, and that money, that is ongoing. This is now a change in law, correct? And, or is that, is that a short-term?
So they wrote it into a bill, and they didn't write it into the budget document. So I don't believe that it gets incorporated into the basic education realm yet. But I do think that there's an offer that, I believe that they're trying to see how we use it, what that looks like, and that eventually they will write it in. Materials, supplies, and operating costs, or MSOC, we did receive an increase. So those are all of the, the supplies and materials that we buy for the district. We get a per-student allocation. We spend way more than that. However, it's great that they're going to provide us with some additional resources for that. On the wages and benefits side of the House, the implicit price deflator, which, which is a cost-of-living adjustment, is being provided at 5.5%. We will pass that on to all of our full-time equivalent staff, and that will be on the 22, 23 contract years salaries. SEB, or School Employees Benefit Board, I'm trying to use every acronym that we have in education finance, has increased. So this is the allocation that we pay on behalf of each of our staff for health benefits and other insurance benefits. And then retirement increased, but just for the TRS staff, the TERS staff. And that's who participates in the TERS versus PERS versus SERs.
There is a glossary term for those that are at home, and they want to review it in the back of the presentation.
Yeah, there, I did include a glossary in this one because it was a little more, it was a little more acronym-heavy than normal. Just to put these onto a schedule so that you can see how they look as a whole, we did receive, and, and I did, I did kind of mix apples and oranges, and I hate to do that, but I did it here because they seemed relevant to the conversation. But if we take all of the resources that we'll be receiving from the legislature, we balance that against some of the enrollment declines because I do think that that is something that offsets some of those increases that we will be getting. We look at the levy that we have gotten approved through our voters. Thank you, Tacoma voters. We'll receive an additional $1.5 million of levy resources. And then we look at that in comparison to the expenditures that come along with those same things. We're actually in worse shape, thanks to the legislature. However, we do provide a staff beyond what the legislature provides for. So with the legislature, they provide 1,800 staff, so to speak, staffing units to us. We have closer to 2,200 staffing units. And so those extra 400 staffing units have additional costs associated with them when we have retirement costs, benefit costs, salary wages impacts, all of those things. So that's what is a starting point for our budget. We'll take all of these considerations into conversations with our cabinet members as we continue on with our budgeting process. And we will work on developing recommendations back to you and to our community as it relates to our budget.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you for the update, and we will see you, see you soon for the budget discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Superintendent, do you have anything to add on this?
Nope, thank you very much.
Okay, so moving back to, back to the item 13, Curriculum and Instruction. We have 13.1, Approval of Acceptance of Career and Technical Education Graduation Pathways Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. And just to be clear, you can do maybe one right after the other after we vote. But the next one is also, it's a similar one, but it's, it's slightly different. So maybe, just so, just so folks know, it'll sound like--
I'll have an expert up here to-- I'll have an expert come in.
Oh, no, it's okay. I'm just saying that, you know, just letting people know it's not the same thing twice.
Oh, okay. I thought you wanted me to tell you the difference between the two.
Yeah. Anyway, so, go ahead.
Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Director of Career and Technical Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the Career Preparation and Launch Grant from the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction in the amount of $150,000 for the period July 1, 2021 through August 31, 2023, and expenditure of funds according to accepted guidance funding source opposite of the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt.
We have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions about this one?
No, but I do appreciate our district's efforts to support our students and our CTE programs.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Passes four to zero. Item thirteen-point-two, approval of acceptance of career preparation and launch grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support, on behalf of the Director of Career and Technical Education, recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the Career Preparation and Launch Grant from the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction in the amount of fifty-thousand dollars for the period December second, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and expenditures of funds according to accepted guidelines, funding source, Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions on this one? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item thirteen-point-three, approval of the application for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two Head Start COLA Grant Number Ten CH zero one one nine zero.
Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends the Board of Directors approve submission for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two Head Start COLA Grant Application in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, seventy-nine dollars, and if awarded, approve expenditure of funds according to accepted guidelines.
And the funding source is HHS Office of Head Start.
I move.
Okay, it's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about this one?
A comment on this one. As a Head Start teacher myself, I truly appreciate our district's efforts to fund our Head Start and early learning departments, ensuring that our teachers and our Head Start teachers specifically get paid a fair wage, and that's what COLA is, is the cost of living adjustment for people who don't know at home, and so I'm really excited about that.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, passes four-zero. Thirteen-point-four, approval of the application for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two Head Start Quality Improvement Grant Number Ten CH zero one one nine zero.
Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve submission for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two Head Start Quality Improvement Grant Application Number Ten CH oh one one nine oh in the amount of twenty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, and if awarded, approve expenditure of funds according to accepted guidelines, funding source Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Head Start.
I move.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Passes four-zero. Thank you very much, Zeke. Moving, oh, oh, we have thirteen-point-five, the rescission of approval to enter our contract negotiations with PaperCo for tutoring services and approval to enter contract negotiations with TPR Education LLC, tutor.com, online tutoring platform for TPS students.
Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends the Board of Directors rescind the approval to enter contract negotiations with paper.co and approve request to enter contract negotiations with TPR Education Online Tutoring Platform for TPS students grade three through twelve, funding source ESER.
Great. Anyone, motion?
I move.
Second?
A second.
Been moved and seconded. Does anyone have questions or comments on this item?
Question. Zeke, you came about a month or two ago, and you kind of explained like what this app was going to be for. Do we have anything else in the works?
So, yes, it's, uh, this, March tenth is when I was here before. PaperCo was the winner of the RFP. In the process of actually getting the contract language, it just came down to matching both the requirements from the state, our safety policies for kids, and we weren't able to get there. And so we go to the next vendor that was on that list, and that's what we're asking tonight, is if we can start that.
Sounds great. Thank you, Zeke.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It passes four-zero. Moving on to, thank you, Zeke, fourteen, business matters. Fourteen-point-one, approval of addendum number ten to the contract with First Student Inc., People Transportation Services. Just put on those tennis shoes and run back up.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends the Board of Directors approve addendum number ten to contract number TSD nineteen dash oh seven-nine between First Student Inc. and Tacoma School District Number Ten, funding source transportation.
Do we have a motion?
I move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this one? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, it passes four-zero. Fourteen-point-two, approval to extend the contract, uh, TSD dash twenty dash zero one six B one nine oh two four C, Orca Pacific Inc., for two additional years with addendum one.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the Superintendent and/or designee approve the extension of contract TSD dash twenty dash zero one six, Orca Pacific Inc., for two additional years with addendum one excluding tax, funding source, operations.
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Morris, I'd wonder if you just would explain what this is.
This is to provide the chemicals and supplies that we use for all of our high school pools. It's just an extension of that contract instead of having to go out for bid. Currently, at this time, the pricing things are, are in line.
Perfect.
So then my question is, um, so basically, my understanding is that they basically did a really good job, so we're going to keep them on.
Well, their pricing is steady, yes. They did a good job, and the price has been maintained.
All right, thank you, Morris.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension, I mean, extensions? Hearing none. It passes four to zero. Item fifteen, thank you, thank you, Morris. Item fifteen, other business, there's none on the agenda. So we are moving on to board comments and reports, and I will turn it first to our student reps. We have Shidra and Caitlin here, which, who, who wants to go first? Caitlin's coming first, okay. And Caitlin, can you remember to, you know, your full name and the school you're, you come from, so people know?
Yeah, I'm Caitlin Yet, and I'm from Stadium High School. Just some things happening at school. The Memorial Day Assembly is May twenty-sixth, and we've been working hard on that. And then prom for seniors is June eleventh, which is really exciting. And also, I've been hearing like complaints, and I think this is what the comment was about, just like the district's filtering, content filtering system is like blocking a lot of like useful websites, like Gmail and the Common App. And like when we try to research stuff, like during class, for class, like, we are not able to access websites where we should be able to access. And like teachers have the opportunity to like send something in to get those websites unblocked, but that just takes a really long time, so it's kind of not very efficient and just annoying for the students and staff. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thanks for sharing your experience with us. And, okay, Shidra, you, did you want to say anything?
Yeah.
I can't hear you.
She said she's going to say the same thing as Caitlin.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna echo, echo that comment back. All right, thank you, Shidra. All right, so now, I guess we're gonna go on to the, to the group and what they want to share, and I will, I will just start by saying that we had a wonderful celebration event for our superintendent, Special Assignment Carla Santorno, that was hosted by the UW Tacoma Foundation for Tacoma Students and, of course, TPS as well, last week. Seems like it was recently, I just can't remember, it was last Friday. And it was just really well-attended, and it was spectacular, all sorts of old board members and other folks were there to really, and partners, community partners, and Carla's family was there, and it was just a lovely opportunity for everyone to thank her and recognize the great work that she's done to lead this district through the past decade of challenges, just major challenges, and, and changed the face of how we do education, which has just become a model for the state and nation. So we're all so proud of, of the work that Carla and Josh have done together, and we're going to miss Carla. We're not quite ready to let her go, but we just wanted to say that the community has started the, the process of, of vetting her on her retirement. So that was a joyous occasion. And then I'll just say one other thing was that I went to the opening ceremony of, of Metro Park's Swan Creek Park last Saturday, and it was fabulous. It had been a rainy day, and the sun literally, this, that, came out, the sky cleared, and it was a beautiful sunny, wonderful day, but kids were everywhere. It was fabulous. And I, I have, if you have not had a chance to see Swan Creek Park, go, please go see it. It's a beautiful resource for this community, and I want to say I'm really excited about Lister Elementary, because it's right in their backyard, and we have this partnership with Metro Parks Tacoma, and they are starting doing learning, outside learning opportunities for the, for the elementary students, and having class outdoors and learning all sorts of applications to what they're studying in the classroom. And it is just one of the amazing ways that Tacoma Public Schools really reaches out and, and tries to make better opportunities for kids to learn in variety of ways. So I want to commend everyone and, and that's involved, and, and encourage folks to go take a look at Swan Creek Park. So who wants to go next?
I'll go.
Okay.
I was ready. Um, in the past two weeks, I went to visit Idea High School, and I'm just like a super auntie, I'll say that, because I got kids at all the schools, because kids have come through my preschool programs, or kids that I've nannied in the past. So I ran into a former student, that was hilarious. But I wanted to say that it's a really inventive school, and they have a really awesome curriculum, hands-on learning, and it kind of flows right into our CTE programming. So I was really grateful to see it in action. I had students lead me on the tour and kind of explain like this is how our school works, and I'm really excited to hear that they have their own prom coming up. As you know, it's, it's a really small school. So the fact that they're having their own events and things in their community, I was really grateful to hear that. And then also, just touching back on AAPI Month, I actually had to research it growing up in school, you know, you hear about certain months, like Women's History Month and things like that, and I found out that Asia-Pacific Islander Month, it started the year I was born in nineteen ninety-one. So I'm really grateful that our school is bringing ordinances and things to the forefront of our knowledge, things that we can think about, things we can bring into the classroom so that we can acknowledge every student every day. We have a really awesome community of Asian and Pacific Islander students here on, in our campuses. So I'm just really grateful for our district for bringing that up, for teachers and for people like me totally forgot about it. I do not remember learning about it, but I was grateful to re-research it because our district is doing it. So thank you for all the work you're doing.
Great, thank you. Director Strozier, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I'll go. I, I spent some time at some elementary schools last week for walk and roll. We were celebrating Bike, Bike Month, and it, it was a good time. Friday, I was able to go to my kid's school, which was a lot. I'm talking about a lot. Well, she, my daughter was introducing me to so many kids. I'm like, there's no way I'm going to remember all these names, but hey, nice to meet you. But walk and roll is exciting, we're celebrating young people who find alternative routes to school, bike, skating, scootering, skipping, or whatever the case may be. And we got to give our stickers and fruit leather, and they had the, the Whitman Wildcat out there in the rain. I didn't know if that was a good idea, but it was out there in the rain. And kids were like, what, what's going on? And we were able to explain to them the purpose of, you know, us being out here celebrating them, and they really appreciated. Everybody wanted a sticker, everybody wanted a fruit lever, everybody wanted to participate in what was going on. It was just something new and exciting, getting kids pumped to go into, into their learning environment. So walk and roll was fun. Shout out to Callan Henley from the City of Tacoma, Councilmember Walker, John Hines, Councilmember Hines, they came out to one of the schools as well. So it was good to just be in community, celebrating young people, having a good time, even if it was raining. Good thing Whitman had a covered spot for us to do the same, so it was good.
Awesome, thank you so much. Director Leon?
Yeah, thanks. I visited Reed Elementary this morning, had an excellent, just visit with their team. Principal Sloan gave me an excellent tour and discussion around some things that they're doing there. I'll just kind of mention a few of them. But they have a very large percentage of free and reduced lunch kids. They've got some barriers, like seventy-five percent of their kids go to school on the other side of the highway. They're right next to I-5, as most people probably know, but I didn't realize seventy-five percent of kids were on the other side of the mall. So that was pretty impressive that those kids have that barrier, and they're still doing well and improving in many ways, as you'll hear. Thank you for our leadership for getting them summertime school busing, which wasn't a, a normal thing in the past, to get them over there, because they, they don't feel, they can safely walk from that distance across the highway over to their school. Really strong culture of support. SEL teaching and support has been going on there for a while. They used to have a lot of turnover, they still have a lot of turnover in kids because of just the barriers of what, you know, people that live in apartments sometimes switch apartments a lot faster than people live in houses. So, but they've been able to retain their staff at much, much higher levels than in the past, and increase their reading rate, their reading proficiency by like two-hundred-and-fifty percent or more over the past like four years. So they're doing excellent work there. They also were able to secure or get themselves on the list to get a new field, which is important, because the, the expansion of I-5 took away all their trees, and it's really loud there, really, really loud. I was impressed at how loud it was from the traffic. So they're going to get a new field, and they're going to get trees replanted there by WashDOT, and they've been persistent, and there's this whole process of, sometimes you don't get all the trees you were promised, so they, they're on it, and, and planting trees and letting them grow and getting more trees to help the kids be healthy. So thank you for all the great work that Principal Sloan and her team are doing there. I also just, I'll mention a little bit, well, actually, I'd like to hear, maybe I'll finish my comments, I'd like to hear a little bit about what the students' question was around the filters. But sports-wise, I'm not in tune with all the sports, but I know that Silas had a great season in boys soccer, they were fifteen and oh, so they were the regular season champs. Unfortunately, they've gotten knocked out of the playoffs right now, but they had a great season, so congratulations to them. And in Stadium, this boys team is playing right now for the championship, and that game's probably over now, so if anybody has a result, they can let me know after the game, after the meeting. But I would like to hear maybe, I know there's work being done around the filtering for a system that we have, and if there's anything that Superintendent could give us now, or maybe later in a report, that'd be excellent to hear, that, I know there's work being done around that to improve it.
Yeah, I think we have some things that we'll start to be able to be able to communicate that allow some flexibilities. And then I'll just remind us all that we have a, a, an obligation to, with cybersecurity and internet filters, to ensure that our students are safe and our staff are safe. And so our Chief Information Officer has been taking a variety of feedback from folks. He is, he and his team have surveyed a number of school districts to make sure that we're not missing opportunities, worked with our Chief General Counsel to say, how can we continue to adapt and learn? And so we will be giving some updates to staff and students in the next week on some new possibilities. And then we'll just ask folks to continue to go through our process to request websites that are deemed, what's the terminology I'm looking for, is, is educationally relevant? And we need that. And, and then a very quick summary, that becomes information that will help us teach the system how more of those like sites can be opened up.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I, did you have something? Yeah. So I'd also just like to say, we are very close to the end of the school year, as we know, and to those seniors out there, congratulations. And as you know, it's coming up graduation, the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth of June, back-to-back graduations at the Tacoma Dome. So that's pretty exciting, and it was great to hear from our student reps that, that the end-of-the-year parties and are, are happening, and that, because I know there was a couple of years that that was missing, and I'm so glad that this, this year, things will be back more normal than they have been in the past. So as for the next board meetings, we will be here for the next May nineteenth, which is next Thursday. We will come back at six PM for a study session to finish our conversation on, or not finish, but to continue our conversation on anti-racist policy for the district. May twenty-sixth is the, our next business meeting, six PM here, and then June ninth, we will back, be back for another business meeting. So does anyone have anything else to share for the good of the order?
Superintendent Garcia, if you could share out just again about caps and how students can receive help for that, you know the words, I'm, you know, thanks, Josh.
Absolutely.
My brain preschool.
If any family needs any support with their cap and gown, if they can have an opportunity, if some families like to purchase them, some have opportunities where they just rent them, some like to give them back. And the most important thing to know is, is that we're here for you. And so there are funds through the Help a Student Fund, and where would I access that? You can just go to your local school, your local high school, and start with the office staff and your principal, and they can help you get through theirs. But not having a cap and gown will not be a barrier for you to participate in graduation ceremonies, okay?
Absolutely. Well, that is it for tonight, so thank you, everyone, and we are adjourned.
Go Apes.
Oh, jeez. I was gonna say, go Jags. This is the Reed Elementary School symbol.